Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodion Voice Parade, Montecarlo, Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Council Court. Today is Class 115, Class 115. What did we learn in Class 114? Well, we were finishing up with the reading of the 1979 United Nations Convention on the Taking of Hostages, right? It's an international multilateral treaty amongst states, right? To deal with what they call the grave crime of hostage-taking, right? And we learned in there how Moroccan states can enforce that particular treaty. We learned about the fact that Moorish Americans cannot enforce that treaty. Well, why is it that Moorish Americans cannot enforce a treaty that talks about hostage-taking? Because Moorish Americans, first of all, is a name that does not exist in international law, so therefore it's not a politically recognized state name. There's no constitution that recognizes Moorish Americans as a political group of people that has an identified landmass, right? Has a population, has three branches of government, and the ability to enter into relations with other states, right? So therefore Moorish Americans are lawless because they have no laws and the first law that they're in the absence of is a competent constitution, right? But unfortunately, you cannot draft a constitution that says Moorish American. Well, why not? Well, we learned in Class 114, those are two separate parties, right? According to the treaties, there's Moroccans and Americans, so you can't turn around and draft a constitution that recognizes both parties into one constitution to claim that as being some new Frankenstein name, right? That would be considered fraud. You can't claim to be both parties, right? Either Moroccan or you're American. But unfortunately, the Moorish Americans call themselves Moroccan Americans, right? And why is that? It's because the Moors have been adopted by America, so therefore the last name of your adopted family is what? American. But the reality, the last name, right? The maiden name of your family is Moroccan, so Moors have an obligation to return to Morocco and pledge their allegiance to a Moroccan government because your last name, your maiden name, your consign苟ne name is Moroccan. And you have to say at some point, well, I appreciate my adopted mother looking out for me for a little while. She was an abusive stepmother. But at the same time, at least the United States did provide some protections for Moors. I'll give an example. LeBron James is a billionaire. Jay-Z, the rapper, is a billionaire. You've got all kinds of billionaires out there that look like you and I, so you can't see it, turn around and say that the United States did not help Moors one way or another, right? So at the end of the day, we still have to tell our adopted stepmother who somewhat abused us that thanks, but we're moving back with our own mother. We're going to return back to Morocco and pledge our allegiance back to our own family tree, right? So in Class 114, we learned that only Moors of a Moroccan state can enforce the fact that we have been taken as hostages. And a hostage-taking situation is a grave crime in international law. So therefore whoever takes a Moroccan national as a hostage has to be adjudicated for that crime. And that's what we're learning by reading that United Nations instrument commonly known as a treaty, is a multilateral treaty amongst states, right? And that's what Moors are learning. We're learning how to enforce our laws. So therefore the Moors need to not only become a party to international law instruments, but we must also adopt that language, copy paste it into a Word doc, and turn it into a bill. And that bill would turn into Moroccan legislation that will be have the Legislative Act of Moroccan Law as well as the international law instrument and where we can flank the United States, all right? They can't get out of that because they're bound to international law and Moroccan law, all right? And we enforce that through our council courts. And when our council court does not prevail, then we take it to the ICJ. And that's the bottom line, all right? Okay, so let's go ahead and move into our class. As you know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. As of late, I've been hearing Moors say this word more frequently. The word is, "We need a nation-state," right? All the Moorish American teachers all of a sudden get brand new. Now they want to keep constantly keep saying the word "nation-state," right? When they should add to that as well is the fact that the Moors are what? Stateless and lawless. So therefore, if the Moorish American teachers keep saying, "We need a nation-state," what does that mean? That means the Moors are right now in the absence of a competent constitution because what derives the definition of a state? That is a constitution. That's what creates a state, right? So every time you hear Moorish American teacher keep saying, "We need a nation-state." They're saying, "We need a competent constitution." And they just won't simply tell you that, right? So the Constitution is the port to get access to international law. It is the nation-state. It establishes a nation-state in each of the territories commonly known as Udi Passe Deus Juris, right? Now obviously Moorish American teachers won't teach you about that word, but that's why you're here to learn more about that, right? So every time you hear your Moorish American teacher keep saying "nation-state," they're trying to tell you, "You need a constitution." That's just the bottom line, all right? And let's continue. All right, so as the Moors know, we've been going over the United Nations Charter of 1945. We've already read over Chapter 7, which is about action with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression. We read Articles 39 through 51. So now we'll keep talking about what are threats, breaches, and acts of aggression, right? We'll keep talking about that. So therefore we need laws in order to combat, right? You need laws in order to respect your own human rights. You need laws through the state in order to deal with threats, breaches, and acts of aggression by a county or any other foreign state, right? And that's how you combat this. You have to put things in writing through your Moroccan legislation that lets other foreign states know what your rights are in terms of how you can have self-defense and deal with threats, breaches, and aggression, right? That's what Moors have to learn. We have to utilize the pen, Moors. The pen will put an end to colonialism, right? Okay, now, as we start to move on, we're going to start reading what was called "Responsibility of States for Internationally Wrongful Acts of Year 2001." Okay, so the United Nations came out with a multilateral treaty, okay? That now talks about how do you hold states responsible for their wrongful acts, right? How do you hold a state responsible for the fact they've done something to breach your laws? How do you hold a state responsible for the fact they breached international law, right? So this right here, we'll start going deeper into this. The Responsibility of States for Internationally Wrongful Acts of Year 2001. Okay, keep in mind that the United Nations started working on this particular instrument almost 50 years before it was fully adopted, all right? So they started working on it around 1950. And it took nearly 50 years before the United Nations states, the member states, decided to get to a point where they agreed to the terms and conditions of this. Why is that? It's because several states on planet Earth do not want to be held to the standards of a contract that tells them how to act, right? But yet states on planet Earth were not in a status of good faith. They were bad actors instead of good actors. So therefore a contract had to be written, and it took decades before all the states agreed, okay? But they finally agreed in 2001 on how to hold each other accountable for wrongful acts, right? To hold each other accountable regarding threats, right? Breaches and aggression. That's what it's all about. So we're not going to start reading over it today. I just want the Moors to know this is where the direction we're heading, okay? And the reason why we're not going to read over it today is because unfortunately, we're going to have to talk about this travesty that took place with this Moore, right? I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity to talk about what we should learn from this, right? This is an educational moment for all of us. It's very tragic, but if you don't learn from the tragedy, that means we're doomed to repeat the same mistake again. This will happen again, right? So as the Moors know, this Moore was killed by the local police, right? And we'll talk more about that today, okay? So today is kind of a sober, a somber moment for me because I don't like it when our people are killed, but we have to look at both sides of the coin, right? We have to be objective and understand, okay, what was the probable cause here? What actually took place? What was the actual origin of how this started in the first place? I'll say it again. What was the origin of how it got to this moment? That's what we'll talk about today, okay? So let's take it from the top. We'll read about this tragic event. And I want to say my condolences to his family, right? My condolences, right? But we got to learn from this as Moors, okay? So let's take it from the top, okay? This is a news article, okay?
Okay, reporting from the Atlanta Black Star. "This is my land, I'm a Moore. Pennsylvania man fatally shot in eviction showdown after hours-long gun battle with cops reportedly believed he was a sovereign citizen." Written by Nicole Duncan Smith on Sunday, August 27th of 2023 at 12:00 PM. "After refusing to leave his Garfield apartment on the grounds that he was a sovereign citizen and didn't have to abide by the rules of this nation, a black man was killed during a confrontation with deputies. William Hardison Sr., a 63-year-old who identified nationally as a Moore, exchanged hundreds of rounds of gunfire with law enforcement after they came to evict him from the property on the morning of Wednesday, August 23rd." "Seven deputies arrived at his home around 11:00 AM to get Hardison out of the apartment. Deputy said they attempted to reason with him, but he would not concede. 'We tried to make contact. We were outside the house, called for him, tried to bring him out peacefully to execute the order, but clearly he was not on the cards today,' Allegany County Sheriff Kevin Kraus said to reporters. 'What should have been a simple removal escalated quickly. Hardison fired his guns from the first and second floor windows and through walls at the officers. He had a lot of ammunition in the house. We were all strapped with ammunition, but all had to call for more ammunition,' Kraus said. 'We tried to give him every opportunity to come out, but it elevated to the SWAT team's response.' At this point, armed officers from the Allegany County Sheriff's Office, Pittsburgh Police, the FBI, and SWAT crews were all summoned to the standoff. Multiple factors have played into why Hardison would not acquiesce to law enforcement's commands to leave the building. Some point to a video recorded four years ago where he was pulled over during a traffic stop and said, 'This ain't your land, this is my land, I'm a Moore. I'm a Moore, I got every right to travel from here to Timbuktu,' he said CBS News reports. In the past 15 years, court documents show Hardison getting cited over 30 times for not having the right license or registration. In one video, he tells the police that they have no jurisdiction over him because of his sovereign citizenship. A sovereign citizen is someone who believes they're not bound by the law of the county they are in. Hardison believed, as also explained by the Institute of Strategic Dialogue, that he was directly descended from Moroccan Africans who made a treaty with the United States that entitled their people to land. It is in the context of Hardison's disregard of authority that the showdown happened at the house once owned by his brother. Sources state he had 15 of his brother's guns, what seemed to be an unlimited supply of ammunition in his house, using them against the police. Law enforcement locked down the entire neighborhood for hours, ending the dramatic ordeal six hours later after taking Hardison out with deadly force. It was a pretty lengthy gun battle, Kraus said. 'We certainly did not expect this. We had no information that this individual was this dangerous.' His family said their loved one fought so hard against authorities because he believed he owned the house. The house used to belong to his brother, who passed away, but it was sold. Because he was a sovereign citizen, he did not believe he was bound to the request of the new owner's mention in the property deed, the private company, or the laws from the government that protect property owners.
All right, thank you very much for the read. So what's happening here, Moors? This tragic event of this good brother, right? So I refer to him as good brother, right? There's no need to try to sit here and judge his actions because now he's deceased, right? This is not about looking at what he did right or looking at what he did wrong because this matter has now been settled, right? In a very tragic way. But now we need to go back and examine what really took place. How did this happen, right? Because this brother's story is the story of a lot of Moors from the East Coast to the West Coast. They're starting to claim properties that Moors are squatting in houses. Moors are claiming the land. They say, "It's our land, it's my land." And all this leads to an adversarial and combative position with policy enforcers. So we're going to have to talk about what is the origin of the problem that way we don't continue to repeat this tragic scenario. Now, as we scroll back down, what ended up ultimately happening? What happened? This brother's family, he said, "His family." His family said their loved one fought hard against authorities because he believed he owned the house. The house used to belong to his brother, who passed away, but it was sold. The house was sold. But the good brother felt as though he said, "He believed, he believed." See that word? "He believed he owned the house." But his own family said the house was what? The house was sold. So therefore this good brother was just staying in the house after his brother was deceased. So next, his family turns around and says what? This is what his family says is, "Because he was a sovereign citizen, he did not believe he was bound to the request of the new owners mentioned in the property deed, the private company, or the laws from the government that protect property owners." What are they talking about? Talking about the deed. The deed is what secured the legal argument, the legal defense. So therefore, the good brother calls himself a Moore. He did not have a legal defense. He didn't have a legal argument to say that he owned the property. Some other private investor purchased the property and had a legal argument, a legal defense to take it to court to have the Moore removed, even. It's called due process. But the good brother decided to stay in the house regardless of the fact. But yet his own family tried to let him know, man, your brother sold the house. After he was dead, it got sold. And then the house ended up probably probate or whatever, right? So this good brother now, the Moore now squatting in the house, he decided not to leave because he says it's his house. That's his belief. He couldn't prove it. So what happens? He says, "Oh, I'm a Moore, it's my land. I get to keep this house because it's my property because it's sitting on my soil." Well, let's examine that. First of all, you have to understand what they're doing here. They mentioned the word what? Deed. We got to learn from this, Moore. Deed. Deed is a what? A legal instrument in law. But here's the problem. The Moorish American teachers never taught the Moors about where this word "deed" came from. The word "deed" is in our treaties. If you go to the Treaty of Madrid, I'm talking contract law right now. I'm talking legal argument. I'm talking legal defense. In the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, the Sultan agreed to let the foreigners hold properties in the name of called a deed. They're the holder in due course of deeds. Now you go down to Article 11, okay? You go down to Article 11. I'm using this as a reference point, but we got to learn from this, Moors. The Moors are claiming properties and they have no right to claim these properties. They have no legal, they have no legal defense. They have no legal instrument that gives Moors claims to property. Look what Article 11 says that the Sultan wrote, not white people. The Sultan agreed to these terms and conditions. Know what Article 11?
Article 11. "The right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners. The purchase of property must take place with the previous consent of the government, and the title of such property shall be subject to the forms prescribed by the laws of the country. Any questions that may arise concerning this right shall be decided accordingly according to the same laws with the privilege of appeal to the Minister of Foreign Affairs stipulated in the treaties."
Okay, so this is a treaty, Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. Here's the contract. So in Article 11, the Sultan's wrote, and all the 12 regulatory powers, including the United States of America, signed this and agreed. The Sultan agreed. What did the Sultan allow the foreigners, i.e. the United States of America, to do and their citizens to do while they're residing in Morocco? Here it is, Article 11. "The right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners." That's a treaty provision. Moors don't have a right just to take properties away from Americans. Americans have a treaty right to hold on to it as long as they possess what? A deed. Listen. "The purchase of property must take place with the previous consent of the government, and the title of such property shall be subject to the forms prescribed by the laws of the country." So who gets to make up the laws? It's supposed to be the Moroccan government making up the laws. But the colonies get to hold properties in Morocco lawfully and legally. Listen. "Any question that may arise concerning this right shall be decided according to the same laws with the privilege of appeal to the Minister of Foreign Affairs stipulated in the treaties." So if the good brother was squatting in the house and he had an issue of claim, guess who he's supposed to take that problem to? He's supposed to take it to the authorized authority of the Moroccan government. He did not have a right to take it into his own hands and try to enforce justice all by himself. The treaty is expressive. The treaty sets forth instructions that says, "You go to Moroccan government if you got a problem with the deed." But you can't stand there squatting and arguing with people over a house or property. You got to take it to Moroccan government. Okay, but there lies the problem. The good brother was not represented by a government. Who was he? He just run around saying he's a Moore, but he was a stateless Moore. His Moorish American teachers then told him, "This is our land, we're Aboriginals, we're indigenous, so you can just run around claiming stuff all by your lonesome." And the treaty says something just the opposite. There's the contract. Moors keep saying, "Well, where's the contract? Well, where's the contract?" Okay, well, here's the contract right here. It's called a treaty. Article 11. Article 11, right? Okay. I'm going to read the first sentence again because Moors need to hear this. I'm going to take my time. Article 11. "The right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners." So evidently, a foreigner purchased that house after the good brother's, his blood brother passed away, and a foreigner purchased the house. Now that foreigner's holding what? A deed. He has legal possession. He's a holder in due course of the property. But your Moorish American teacher not telling you about this word "deed." Wait a minute. You see the small print down here? Can you read this, please?
"implemented by Article 60 of the General Act of Al-Dusirah of April 7th of 1906, TS 456, I think that was."
Okay, so the small print, "implemented by Article 60 of the General Act of Al-Dusirah of April 7th, 1906." You see what the United States is doing? They're invoking another treaty, aren't they? Okay, now let's go to the treaty of the Act of Al-Dusirah of 1906 that your Moorish American teachers won't tell you about. They won't read it out loud. Now let's go to Article 60, okay? Because that's what the small print said. Article 11 of the Treaty of Madrid has something to do with Article 60 of the Act of Al-Dusirah of 1906. But watch this. I'm going to go Ctrl+F, Ctrl+F, put in the word "deed." "Deed." You see that? You see how it automatically pulled up the word "deeds"? "Deeds." Soon as I typed in the word "deeds." Well, guess what article it went to? Oh, spoiler alert. Article 6. Article 6. Huh? Well, let me just say this. The good brother who got killed, if he'd have known about the treaties, he would have been educated about the treaties. He might be alive today if he understood the rights of the Americans to hold property. Because the brother kept saying, "He's a Moore." But he looked at these other people like they're foreigners and they have no rights. And the brother didn't know about these rights that foreigners have to hold properties in the name of the word "deed." Okay, read Article 60, please.
Article 60. "In accordance with the right granted by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifian Empire, and His Majesty, the Sultan, shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance."
Okay, start from the top, read again.
Article 60. "In accordance with the right granted by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifian Empire, and His Majesty, the Sultan, shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance."
Okay, what's the interpretation of that? Oh, it's really easy. The Moorish government cannot hinder the right for Americans to hold deeds in Morocco unless that American has done something such as, let's say that they paid their property taxes, right? That's because we got Moroccan laws that says the Americans got to pay property taxes. So if they'd have paid the taxes, maybe we don't transfer the deed over to the next person who's trying to purchase it, right? But in the interim, Article 60 says what? Okay. Article 60. "In accordance with the right granted." It's a right. Granted. It's a right. Right. Granted. It's a treaty right. It's a treaty right granted by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention, which is another treaty. "Foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout, throughout, throughout the Sharifian Empire." This is, the Sultan gave them the right to hold properties. They have a right to be the holder in due course of deeds. Let's continue the reading. "And His Majesty, the Sultan, shall issue to his administration, administration and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause." So therefore, the Moorish government, see a bit right here, talking about judicial officer. I'm the Chief Judge of Council Court. I'm Justice Jay Bay. I cannot give a court order to- to stop Americans from holding property in Morocco unless they done something to breach our Moroccan laws. The administration of the Moorish government. See right here, the administration, administration, administrator and judicial officers, administrative officers and the judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. So this good brother is over here squatting in a house that was purchased by a deed and now this good brother's dead because he thought he owned the property cause he thinks he own the soil. He, he like, I ain't got nothing to do with no deeds, that's of de facto. That stuff don't, it don't, we don't, we don't recognize deeds in Morocco. We don't recognize no Americans' uh, claim of property on our soil. Guess what? That's patently frivolous and arbitrary capricious when Moors say that. Now we got a good brother that's dead because he thought he was spending on his square. And now he's laying down in a box. As insensitive as that sounds, we need to keep it real. He's now transitioned because of the foolishness of what Moorish American teachers have taught all the Moors that we can just go out here and make these arbitrary claims to properties. And the reality is our treaties that your Moorish American teachers won't read to you gave the Americans the right to hold property in Morocco throughout the empire of Morocco. And the Moorish government don't have a right to just arbitrarily take properties away from the Americans without lawful cause. So therefore, the Moorish government, who's the authorized authority of the state, can't take the properties without lawful cause, then why the heck do Moorish Americans who are stateless and lawless and don't have no government think they can just take properties away from Americans? We gotta underscore why this good brother's, why he got killed because he thinks he own a property. Who told him this? His Moorish American teachers did. We gotta look at the origin of the problem and not just the symptom. The symptom is the result. Let's go back to the origin of the problem, cause that's the problem. Let, let's go to the board. Right now we're in chapter, Charter of the United Nations, Chapter seven, Articles thirty-nine through fifty-one. It's about actions with respect to the threats, breaches of the peace and acts of aggression, right? It's about threats, breaches and aggression. Where? In Morocco, cause that, we have to now make this what? Applicable to us, in our territory, right? Cause this is generic language from the Charter, but the Charter represents the plan, so now you gotta bring back regional or within your state. Look at this, drop down. The Moorish American paradigm of civic Moorish teachers is a threat to the peace in Morocco. And the civic Moorish teachers is a breach to the peace treaties. And the civic Moorish teachers is an act of aggression against the various Moroccan treaties. What do I mean? See, the Moorish American, Moorish American teachers, right? The teachers are creating these threats, breaches and acts of aggression cause they're teaching their students this misinformation, this indoctrination that causes their students to go out here and do foolish things. And the, and the students don't have a clue about these treaty rights that the Americans have. This is not me talking about how I'm looking out for Americans, no. The treaty says what? Then, let's read the treaty again. Let's take it from the top, Article sixty. No.
Article sixty. In accordance with the right granted by Article eleven of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifian Empire and His Majesty, the Sultan, shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance.
Shall continue without hindrance. What shall continue without hindrance? Deeds. For who? Foreigners. Who are the foreigners in Morocco? Americans. And who's prohibited from stopping them from transferring deeds? Judges, Moroccan judges. And the administration, which is the legislative branch, right? And executive branch of the Moorish government. We're prohibited from stopping the Americans as long as they're doing what? Paying their taxes. Long as they're abiding by our Moroccan law and our regulations. And that's the problem. The Moorish American teachers never put together the Moroccan states that where we can enforce Moroccan laws. So the United States and they're belligerent, they just been building properties based upon their own permits and codes. And it's not their fault that the Moorish government has been consenting and acquiescing to the fact that we wasn't doing our part of the contract and enforcing Moroccan laws to make sure they're by our laws. So now Moors would just jump out there and take a shortcut instead of taking the time to put together three branches of government to enforce Moroccan laws. And now we getting caught up. Cause it's trickling down from the Moorish American teachers down to their students and their students the ones out here getting locked up. Their students the ones getting killed. This is sad. We gotta talk about the problem and the symptom. The problem is the Moorish American teachers. The symptom is their students getting caught up and making all the Moors look foolish. Let's continue with the read, continue with Article six.
Wherever foreigners may have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings in compliance with regulations and usage.
Read again.
Wherever foreigners may have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings in compliance with regulations and usage.
Read again.
Wherever foreigners may have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings in compliance with regulations and usage.
Continue.
Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property, the Khadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title in conformity to the Mohammedan law.
Read again.
Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property, the Khadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title in conformity to the Mohammedan law.
Okay, so therefore, it was our responsibility not, not only to allow the Americans to hold deeds, i.e. property in Morocco, but it's also our responsibility to make sure we were managing it. We were supposed to be managing the great enterprise of deeds. So therefore, right here says, before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property, the Khadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title in conformity to the Mohammedan law. So the Khadi is who? That's a magistrate, right? That's the one who signs off and to make sure that the, when, before the deeds transferred to another foreigner, the taxes are paid. That, that's pretty much the bottom line. But guess what? The Moors didn't have no Khadi because we two beings running around talking about, we Moorish Americans. There ain't no such thing as Moorish Americans. Ain't no such thing as a Moorish American state and it sure said ain't no such thing as a Moorish American Khadi. Cause it's all about what? Mohammedan law, okay? Mohammedan law. So how do they spell Mohammedan over here? So Mohammedan is the Muslim men. The Mohammedan is what? The Muslim men. And what did we learn about the word Muslim men and Mohammedan? We learned that those words mean what?
Moors.
Moors, Moroccan, right? That's what we learned, okay? Last paragraph.
The Moxen shall designate in each city and district specified in this article the Khadi who shall have charge of such verification.
All right, so the Moxen is what? That's the Moorish government. So the Khadi works for the Moorish government. The judicial and administration works for the Moorish government, the Moxen. This is Moors who's supposed to have been overseeing the great enterprise. But your Moorish American teachers didn't tell you about this. So you've been running around squatting and complaining about foreigners being on our land, but the reality is they have a treaty right to hold property. Not one treaty, but two. The Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty gave them a right, Article eleven, and then Article sixty of the Act of Al-Dusers gave them a right under the word called deeds. We gotta look at the origin and the problem. The problem is this. Moorish American teachers. The problem is Moorish American teachers. That's the problem. Our people getting locked up, detained and, 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 and killed is just a symptom. When are we gonna take the time to fix the problem? Let, let's, let's continue. First of all, let, let me go back up to this good brother. It's important to know. Why, why are we talking about this? It's cause of this good brother, right? Because of this good brother. Yes, did he need medication? Yes. Did he need therapy? Absolutely. Cause he had anger management problems. But his coping mechanism, mechanism was now trying to put his problem to a Moorish perspective. And no one took the time to rein in the order of his brother to bring him in and let him know, brother, you can't be acting like that out in the street. But instead, you know what the Moors are doing? They were looking at this brother's video and rooting him on. This man is cussing and fussing and now he's transitioned in a brutal way. No one took this brother under their wing. His own family kept trying to talk him down from what he was doing all the time. The man spent fifteen years constantly in an altercation with police. Where was the Moorish American state government to rein this brother in and say, you're breaking our laws by what you're doing? Good brother. Where was the act right? Where was his representatives of the Moorish American government? Keep in mind, your so-called master teachers keep saying the government already exists. Your, your so-called Moorish American master teacher keep saying, it exists already. Okay, then where the heck was the government to help this brother? Where was the Moorish American state government and its representatives to rein this brother in? And let this brother know about the treaty rights of the Americans? Where were they? They don't exist, do they? Your Moorish American teachers keep lying, you talking about some government already exists? No government exists. We'll talk about that today, but today's class is about this good brother because this is doomed to happen again. How we gonna fix it? I'll tell you how we fix it. We deal with these belligerent Moorish American teachers. More specifically, these, what I commonly call the civic Moors, right? The civic. These Moors call themselves civic Moors. This is the problem. Moors don't know nothing about government. They think they just gonna strong arm whatever they want. You know what the result gonna keep being? It's gonna be threats, it's gonna be breaches and it's gonna be aggression against them. So the reality is the Moorish Americans and the teachers are keeping up the threats, breaches and acts of aggression because of what they're teaching. It's causing the Moors to act the hell up. The Moors all agitated and in their feelings, they're all emotional cause they can't use a pen to fix their problems. This is why they keep resorting to arms. This is why Moors keep resorting to mayhem because they don't have the competent authority of a pen and know their force, but they perceive as their rights, the pen ain't working for Moorish Americans. And that's why they started just becoming agitated. We gotta talk about this, what's happening? Okay. What is this? This is a very recent video that these good sisters, a lot of sisters got together. This is a YouTube channel called Unscrambled Minds, right? Unscrambled Minds, so a shout out to the sisters who put this together. Uh, very recently, uh, Tajmi Bay was on their show. And his objective was to come in, I guess, it says Tajmi Bay comes to say to so-called blacks are both American Indian and Africans at the same time. So he came on the show and just gave him a bunch of mishmashin word salad. And none of these sisters walked away with a clear understanding of why they even brought him on here in the first place. We're gonna talk about this. We're gonna keep it real. Because we got a brother that, that was land dead over squatting in a property. And we gotta talk about what is the problem? Is the teaching? The colonists is half the problem. I'll say it again. The colonists is half the problem. What's the other half? It's Moors. We're uned- uneducated regarding our own treaties. We don't understand international law. So let, let's listen to a video. Let's take the time to listen to a video. So now Taj is on the show, okay? And they're getting agitated with him, to tell you the truth, because he's talking on such a high level. He's using a vernacular they don't technically understand. Instead of him recognizing who's in his audience, he's using words up here instead of bringing down here so they can just basically understand what he's saying. Right, just keeping it simple and concise. Right, going straight to the point. Instead of all the word salad and, and all the big words, these people don't understand. Let's keep it real. Moors who've been studying with Taj for more than ten years, still trying to figure out what Taj is saying. Much less he go to a, a, on his platform. We got a bunch of sisters who are technically black of Moors because they don't know too much about Moors. Okay, li- listen to a Taj. Let's, listen to a question that was asked to Taj, listen.
Okay, y'all, this is, uh, before I get out of here, this is my last question. Uh, with all the work you've done, how long you guys been doing this work?
Probably about fifty years.
Um, with all of this, um, after all of this is done, you know, all your work done, you gave everyone everything you had, you put your heart into it. Um, how would Taj to repay you wanting to be remembered?
An ordinary brother that, that did not even have what he should have been doing.
Okay, okay, appreciate you seeing the others, uh.
So what did he say? Somebody, uh, somebody asked him the question, uh, how long you been doing this? Uh, about fifty years? Uh, okay, um, what do you think the legacy gonna be said about you? What do you think about your, your legacy? Well, I'm just an ordinary brother who didn't do half of what I should have done. This is his response. He's openly admitting he only did half of what he said he was supposed to do. The question is, is what is the other half that he's keeping to himself that he didn't tell the Moors about? Cause that's what he said out loud. Li- listen to what he said, listen, listen to it again.
First, thank you all. Okay, y'all, this is, uh, before I get out of here, this is my last question. Uh, with all the work you've done, how long you guys been doing this work?
Probably about fifty years.
Um, with all of this, um, after all of this is done, you know, all your work done, you gave everyone everything you had, you put your heart into it. Um, how would Taj to repay you wanting to be remembered?
An ordinary brother that, that did not even have what he should have been doing.
What does that supposed to mean? Well, let's let Taj tell you himself what he means, right? Let's not get into assumption, but I, I'll tell you real quick what he, what he means. He didn't tell the Moors about the treaties and he didn't tell the Moors they were stateless and he didn't tell the Moors that they were absolutely Moroccans instead of being Americans. He didn't tell them what they needed to do in order for them to restore their lands back into a competent constitution. He didn't tell them what they need to do to decolonize. I'll say it again, he didn't tell the Moors what they needed to do to follow the instructions of decolonization. Because you wanna hear him next keep talking about a nation state. What the heck is a nation state? That's a competent constitution. Let's let him tell you himself. Listen. Just a moment.
Right? Yeah. Listen to me. And for any of you on the floor right now, what are the international rules to reparations? Just listen. Speak.
Well, there was a question on the floor, how do black people get reparations? How do us, as a people, get reparations? So Taj is now answering the question, right? He's put the question back on them. He's trying to get them to answer a question. Instead of him just giving them. Instead of him just giving them the answer, he trying to get them to come up with the answer. And he's on there to tell them the answer. He trying to get them to answer the question on their own. Which means he's not serving any purpose. Listen, he's challenging them to ask their own question as if they asked him a rhetorical question that he himself hasn't done. Now, keep in mind, he just admitted he didn't tell us the other half. But now he's asking these sisters, these good sisters, why don't y'all know about the other half? Listen. Listen.
Charles, we made it to the, uh, uh, the app proven check that you were from chattel slavery.
No, first of all, you must know. First of all, you must specifically and lawfully identify the parties at issue. And you can't, you can't come under non-negative, but you can use non-negative as part of your argument of injury. But you must identify the degrees of the nation states. Now, what nationalities are the injured parties and what nationalities are the aggressors or the violators of international law? Name them. Europeans. Europeans are category of a continent. You have nation-states, just like Africa is a continent. You have nation-states, just like America is a continent. You have nation-states. Name the nation-states. Did you hear that? Let let's listen again before I do the breakdown. Right? Lose me. From all of you on the floor right now, what are the international rules to reparations? Just lose me. Speak.
Charles, we made it to the, uh, uh, the app proven check that you were from chattel slavery.
No, first of all, you must know. First of all, you must specifically and lawfully identify the parties at issue. And you can't, you can't come under non-negative, but you can use non-negative as part of your argument of injury. But you must identify the degrees of the nation states. Now, what nationalities are the injured parties and what nationalities are the aggressors or the violators of international law? Name them. Europeans. Europeans are category of a continent. You have nation-states, just like Africa is a continent. You have nation-states, just like America is a continent. You have nation-states. Name the nation-states. You hear that? Taj is admitting that he knows the Moors are stateness. Because Taj keep saying that people need a nation state. So in the previous video, he said, well, I didn't do half of what I should have done. See, he knows that in Europe, Europe has fifty states. He knows that Africa has fifty-five states. He knows that what's commonly known as the continent of America has thirty-five plus states, right? So he's trying to school this young lady and tell her, well, you just can't go get reparations without telling the world, the United Nations, what's the name of your what? Nation state. Okay, Taj, let me ask you the same question. What's the name of your nation state? Taj Me Bay? It don't exist. So you see, these sisters, these good sisters, just a moment. These good sisters. And 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 for the record, I I apologize to these good sisters, because you wasted your time. Taj ain't gonna ever answer these questions directly. He's always gonna put it back on you to answer the question. Because he already told you, he don't wanna do the other half of the work. But he wants credit for fifty years of being a so-called master teacher. So these sisters just want the answer to the test. He won't give it to them, so he talks in riddles. He talks in circles, because these sisters don't understand what he mean when he say nation state. So I wanna apologize to these good sisters, because good sisters, let me tell y'all something. The reality is Taj Me Bay should have told you about the treaties. He should have told you about international law. He should have told you point-blank that you're just simply Moroccan. That's your nationality. But guess what? You can't claim to be Moroccan until a Moroccan state recognizes you as being a Moroccan national. That's what he should have told you. He should have told you, you need a constitution in order to be able to proclaim that you have a state. He should have asked you, what do you think your nationality is? Soon you would have answered, you would have said, no, your nationality is Moroccan, because Noam Cholli said we're what? Descendants of Moroccans. Noam Cholli said the land was what? The Moroccan Empire. So what nation state is Taj Me Bay talking about if he not gonna just simply tell him the land is Morocco? You're Moroccan, and you need to pledge your allegiance back to a Moroccan state. But see, Taj can't tell him that. Why not? Because he himself hasn't followed those same instructions. That's the problem. This is why he admitted he didn't do the other half. Okay, listen. So we just heard him talk about the Moors need a nation state, right? Let's let's keep it germane. He just said the answer to the test is what? We need a nation state that claims the nationality the same way all the fifty states do in Europe. The same way all the fifty-five states do in Africa. Same way the thirty-five plus states doing what's commonly known as the continent of America. But yet he ain't gonna tell nobody the fact that the Moors are stateness, which makes them lawless, thus the reason why they continue to have a knee put on our necks. Because we're stateness people. Listen. This is Taj, okay, on his most recent, uh, show he did about, uh, about two weeks ago, okay? Now, keep in mind, this video right here was on, I think, August eighteenth. And the video I just showed you was July twenty-fourth. So within three weeks of each other, he's coming out with this video. That's very important for context. It's a very short period of time, three weeks, right? Now, somebody about to ask him about states. I want you to listen to his answer when they ask him about statehood, okay? Because he just told those sisters the answer to the test, what? Nation state. Okay, now listen.
In our communities, totally disruptive, impoverishing, but that has been the culture. And the people are kind of fearful of change, but whether we choose to change or not matters not. The world is changing. And the things that we're trying to preserve are collapsing around our feet.
They sure are.
Whether or not we wanna be realistic about what's going on or not, that's still our choice. I say, don't pay the price for it.
You should.
Should we be focused on establishing Moroccan states like Ampac?
You can't, and when I say that you can't, I'm not saying that you can't. We need not try to establish what already existed. We need to clean up and reactivate what already existed. Can it not be said? Or can it be said that it is not, that it is provable for the record that Dwight D. Eisenhower in nineteen fifty-four, i.e., representative for the United States Corporation Company, relinquished jurisdiction at Morocco, and they closed down punctual court venues, and then promoted the civil rights operations? That's a fact, provable. Is it not provable that in nineteen fifty-two, that France, et cetera, and other nation-states abandoned the United States Corporation Company that was supposed to be decolonizing? Do that?
Let's listen to this guy.
Oh my god.
But on the tail end, you notice he mentioned nineteen fifty-two. What's he talking about? France versus United States of America that gave, the ICJ gave United States of America unlimited jurisdiction over Moors? Lawfully? Why? Because the treaty said that the United States could have a limited jurisdiction over Moors as long as the Moors kept calling themselves what? Americans. Why are he telling the people this? He claimed he read France versus United States of America, then why don't he read it out loud to the Moors? He won't do it, because what he just said there was false, i.e. a lie. Let's go back and listen to it. Now, keep in mind, he just told those sisters in the last video, they needed a nation state, right? But then Dr. G asked him a question about nation states. Let's see what his response is. Just a moment.
Culture in our communities, totally disruptive, impoverishing, but that has been the culture. And the people are kind of fearful of change, but whether we choose to change or not matters not. The world is changing. And the things that we're trying to preserve are collapsing around our feet. Whether or not we wanna be realistic about what's going on or not, that's still our choice. I say, don't pay the price for it.
Should we be focused on establishing Moroccan states like Ampac?
You can't, and when I say that you can't, I'm not saying that you can't. We need not try to establish what already existed. We need to clean.
Wait a minute. He just told those sisters, first of all, he didn't do half of what he should have done. Then he turns around and tells those sisters, oh, we need a nation state that recognizes your nationality. It's called a constitution that recognizes you. Then three weeks later, he turns around and goes on Dr. G's show and tell, somebody asked the question, don't we need states like Ampac? He says, no. Then he says, well, wait a minute. Well, what I'm trying to say is, it already exists. The state already exists. Okay, Taj, you saying the state exists already? Prove it. He can't prove a state exists under the name Moorish American state. There's no such thing as Moorish American. He's talking about the treaties. The treaties is what we need to go back and fix. What about the treaties? We need to go back and fix our minds to understand. You gotta go back and read the treaties. You gotta understand international law. The treaty set forth certain guidelines, specific performance for us to follow the instructions to get back. And the state was called decolonization. International law, the United Nations Charter, and the several member states of the charter have taught people how to decolonize. Ever since nineteen forty-five, there's been over eighty-plus territories that have decolonized. In Africa, fifty-five states is a part of that eighty territories. So he said, we got, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we just need to fix what's already there. There's no such thing. Where is it there?
There's no there.
There's no three-breast government? Listen, Taj is a walking hypocrite. Listen to me. Listen. Since Taj said that government is already existing, and he been teaching for fifty years, but he didn't tell the other side of it. But then he turn around and say, we need a nation state, and then someone says, should we have states like Ampac? He says, no. Okay, then what are you trying to say, Taj? Because look at this case of two thousand and five, okay? Moorish Science Temple of America versus New Jersey, right? December, excuse me, decided September twenty-eighth, two thousand and five was about what? It was about what? The Moor, this is Taj Me Bay's case of two thousand and five, when he got his teeth kicked in by the federal judges. It says right here, the great seal Moorish Science Temple of America Incorporated. That's how it was fighting in two thousand and five. But he said the state already exists, that we gotta fix it. Oh, this is how you fix it, Taj? You you fight the colonists with a corporation? I thought you said the state already exists. Well, that don't say state, that says incorporated. Right, now, now, keep in mind, Ctrl F, Taj. I'm putting the word Taj. This is his case. This is the judge pointing out, the Moor minister Taj Me Bay is his case. The judge is calling out the parties. And the judge says what? What did the judge say? Okay, let's go Ctrl F. Now, let's just go back to the top. Let's go back to the top. Why am I showing this? Because we got a brother that got let's just say, canceled for squatting in a house because he thinks he's a Moor, and he has rights to property. And that Moor was never taught properly by the Moorish American teachers, who are openly saying they didn't teach the Moors half of what they should have known. Then simultaneously Taj says, oh, oh, we need a nation state. Then somebody asked him three weeks later, what about Ampac and what they're doing to state? Oh, you can't do that. Well, it's not that you can't do it. We need to just go back and fix what's already there. Okay, if it's already there, then why you fight a case as incorporated through a dang-gone temple? That don't say state. Okay, read it from the top, though.
One factual background, the Great Seal Moorish Science Temple of America, Inc., and other related entities. The Moors filed the present civil action against various defendants inter alia. The state of New Jersey, the Asbury Park Police Department, including individual members of the police department. Here and after collectively, the Asbury defendants.
Oh, so it was the state, the state, state of New Jersey, right? State of New Jersey, but where is the word state? And what Taj said, he said, the Great Seal of Moorish Science Temple of America Incorporated. He already mentioned the word state, but yet New Jersey said the word state. You you see what's happening already? So corporation versus the state of New of New Jersey. Now, keep in mind, state of New Jersey is still a charter. But at least they're calling themselves a state. Taj didn't even use the word state. But yet he said it already exists. Listen. Now, talk about this. This is the problem. This is the problem right here. These these Moorish American civic teachers that don't know deadly squat. Listen. All right, arising.
A rising out of incidents that allegedly occurred between some of the defendants and an individual or individuals belonging to the Moors organization representing the plaintiffs here. The Moor's complaint is extremely vague, and the exact causes of action for which the Moors seek relief is unclear. Essentially, the complaint makes no logical sense inasmuch as it is a random rendition bordering on a mishmash of legalese turned into meaningless meanderings.
So the judge said, how Taj is fighting this as an organization? Why is he called an organization? Because the Moorish Science Temple is what? An organization, and not a state. You see what the judge is doing? He's calling out the parties. So then he turn around and tell Taj, yeah, man, you know that word salad you gave us? Let me go ahead and put that in writing as to why we're we're gonna kick you in your keister. It says, the Moor's complaint is extremely vague, and the exact cause of action for which the Moors seek relief is unclear. Essentially, the complaint makes no logical sense inso much as it is a random rendition bordering on a mishmash of legalese turned into meaningless?
Meandering.
Meandering. See, right here, it says mishmash. Mishmash means a word salad. Of just gibberish. And this is what Taj Me Bay does. He just, he just rambles. He never gets straight to the point to tell you exactly what the complaint is and how you fix it, what's the nature of relief. You got a complaint, and you're looking for relief. And you must keep it concise, and you must invoke law in order to get said relief. But Taj don't know how to keep it simple. He gotta give you this buffering and buffering like Moses in the desert, walking around for forty years. Not going nowhere fast. So even the court said that Taj is just rambling, and it's unintelligible. It's unintelligible, right? Right here again, I'm gonna read it again. The Moor's complaint is extremely vague, and the exact cause of action for which the Moors seek relief is unclear. See, gotta be concise and tell us what you want, what's the relief. He couldn't, he couldn't manage it. So he didn't went on the show with these sisters. He did the same thing to them for like eight hours straight, just rambling and buffering and rambling and buffering, and then soon someone asked him about Ampac as a state, oh, 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 you can't do that. He go straight at it, didn't he? Then he turn around and say, uh, but yeah, I'm not trying to say you can't, but it it already exists. We just need to fix it. Okay, this is how you fix it, Taj? Because in two thousand and five, you you got your keister kicked, right? By the judges, listen. Let's type in the word, uh, unintelligible, U-N-T-E.
It's not typing.
Just a moment. Unintelligible, U-N-T-E.
I-N.
It's mentioned five times in this case, five times. Right? You put in Ctrl F, it says, the word unintelligible is mentioned five times in this case. Why is that important to know? Okay, right here says what? Right here says, unfortunately, all of the Moors filings in this case are virtually unintelligible. It uses words unintelligible five They use words unintelligible five times in this case about Todd. This is shameful. Right, why am I putting this out? Because if Todd's supposed to be the best civic Moor out there, and the judge said what he said is unintelligible, then how else the other Moors ever gonna get their rights? You know why they can't get their rights? Because there ain't no three branches of government. Todd would have never been able to get away with this if in fact the government actually existed. It would be the government representing Moroccans. But there's nobody representing Moorish Americans, and Moorish Americans don't know what the heck they're talking about. And unfortunately, now we're squatting, and now an eviction's happened, and someone gets killed. This is sad. Listen. Okay, let's go to the conclusion of the case. Now, let me just say this for the record. Instead of Taj Sri Bay keep reading Pope's Metta to Obama, he needs to read this case out loud to all the Moors. Why isn't Todd reading this case out loud that he had in two thousand and five? This is probably before he even met Ross Mariah Bay. This is certainly before he met Kujo. Did he tell Ross Mariah and Kujo about the fact he got his butt kicked in court? To the point that this case was dismissed with prejudice. He couldn't even appeal it to a higher court. It's so sad. Okay, in conclusion, this is what the judge says.
In conclusion, venue is improper in this court and in violation of twenty-eight USC thirteen ninety-one B. There are no facts that would support finding either jurisdiction or venue in this court. Additionally, the Moors' motion for summary judgment is denied inasmuch as it not only appears without merit, but because the language contained therein is unfocused and unintelligible. Finally, because the complaint appears both frivolous, unintelligible, and without merit, this entire matter is dismissed with prejudice pursuant to twenty-eight USC nineteen fifteen E two.
Now, you see what happened? Uh, the federal court made sure they put this publicly on the website. Now, Taj didn't want this case to come out, but the feds turned around and made it public. That's how I found it. You see, Taj don't talk about this case. He wanna keep pointing fingers at the colonists, he wanna point fingers at the Pope, he wanna point fingers at the Moorish Science Temple and the Grand Sheiks. Why don't Taj hold himself accountable for the fact that he hasn't checked none of the boxes that he telling everybody else they need to do? There's no accountability for what he's saying. It's shameful. And now Moors are out here getting locked up by the day because it's Moorish American civic teachers. Listen, as the Moors know, the Moors, they got this thing called Moor Avengers. And these Moors run around and act like they got the sauce. They're all Moorish American, which is what? Subjects of Morocco. They're all subjects. They're not nationals, they're subjects, meaning they're naturalized Moors under the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States. That's provable every day of the week. Because the treaties gave the United States that right, because Moors keep saying they're Americans. Now, I already put out a friendly challenge about four weeks ago. I said, I give y'all a September first to challenge this information. Guess what? I ain't heard from no Moor Avengers. But I'm gonna tell y'all one last time. I'm open for the challenge, set up the platform. I'm talking about these Moorish American so-called master teachers, but they don't wanna get on the platform. Let me tell you why. Because they know I'm going to expose them for being what? Unintelligible. And that's true. They know it. They know I got reference points for days, days. But yet, I'm still gonna extend my hand to y'all. Todd, Ross, Mariah. Now, one thing I will say about Duke of Tears, I don't think Duke of Tears agrees with what Todd's doing with the civic Moor thing, but look at this. Isn't that nature here? I think that's nature here, right? That's what it says at the bottom, right? I think it says nature here. I believe that's nature here. But you know that nature? And all these Moors don't understand what Noble Drahili tried to tell all of us. Noble said what? We're descendants of Moroccans. He never said we were Americans. Noble Drahili literally wrote a constitution. What should that have told the Moors? That even Noble was saying, the United States Constitution is not our Constitution. Why would Noble write a constitution if in fact he felt the United States Constitution was our Constitution? By the mere fact of Noble writing his own constitution was letting you know he wasn't recognizing himself as being American, because he didn't wanna come under the American Constitution, because Noble knew that we were not Americans. He knew that we were naturalized as Americans. We were adopted as Americans. So the man walked off, wrote a constitution, and said that we are descendants of Moroccans, naturalizing the jurisdiction of America. But we gotta return to Morocco and pledge allegiance to a Moroccan government, and that's why he wrote a constitution. Clearly, you gotta understand the common sense of the fact the man wrote a constitution because he wasn't recognizing the United States Constitution as being his Constitution. He knew that was his stepmother's Constitution. He was coming back home to his own mother, which was Moroccan land, for Moroccans, not Americans. It's so dishonest what they've done to the good brother. There's no such thing as Moorish Americans, either you're Moroccans, you're Moroccans. Noble Drahili was Moroccan waving a Moroccan flag. He wasn't waving a American flag saying he's American. He was saying, I am a Moroccan, naturalized in America. And I'm trying to get out of America and come back to Morocco. That's what the treaty language says of eighteen eighty Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, paragraph one. They dishonor this brother. Listen, this is the website called Hakeem Bay dot com. One more solution, right? Shout out to the good brother Hakeem Bay of AMPAC, Alodhiy Moore's Pride of Antioch, Colorado. Excuse me, Alodhiy Moore's Pride of Antioch, Georgia. All right, shout out to the good brother Hakeem Bay. All right, so what is on this website? It's the Moorish Rudder and the Sexton. It's a PDF. Okay, why am I pulling this up? I'm pulling this up because I wanna show the Moors something. Show the Moors something. Right here is a chart, okay? This is a chart. It came out before nineteen eighty-nine, okay? So this is the second revision. Second revision, March first nineteen eighty-nine. This is how long this rudder and the sexton been out, for a long time. And it gave a basic breakdown of government, okay? A basic breakdown of government. Right? So it's got these government titles, okay? Then it's got the translation over here, okay? Then it says, there's another interpretation also over here what these titles are talking about, okay? So over here, you got the Nabi. The Nabi is what? A prophet. Nabi is a prophet, okay? It says, a Kalif is a vice regent, Sultan is a ruler, a Hajj is keeper of the door, right? Amir is a commander, right? A leader. Now, let me pause right there. Taj Sri Bay, Taj Sri Bay keeps saying that he's the Amir. You'll hear Todd go back to his old video, he said, I'm the Amir. Well, where did Todd get that language from? He's getting it from the rudder and the sexton. So if he's saying he's a mirror, he's saying he's a commander, he's saying he's a leader. Leader of what? A temple? That's incorporated, since he said he a mirror? Because this language right here was trying to set up what? Government. The Moors knew they needed government in the nineteen eighties. So this right here, this rudder and the sexton was about trying to establish government because Noble Drahili said to put together what? The Supreme Grand Council. And the Moorish Americans been stalling on it, because they don't want nobody to govern them. They just wanna be running out here rolling. So this rudder and the sexton start talking about government positions. Okay, so right here says what? Sayirahah, which is what? The Speaker of the Parliament. That's the legislative branch. Sayirahah, right? Kazee is a magistrate, right? That's a judge. You got the Wazir, Prime Minister, that's the head of state. You see these titles? You got the Sutra, who deals with like military defense. You got the Sharni, right? You got the Rosam, who are recorders, right? You got the Mufti, who's the man of the army, that's your council general. You got the Hajj and the Mufti, like council general, okay? And right here, you got the Wazir, who's the minister, okay? You got the Wali advisor, okay? So what does this all mean, okay? So Todd's gonna run around and say, he's a mirror. Listen, I'm going through this for a reason. Todd says he's a mirror. Okay, what is a mirror? Read that for me, please.
A ruler, a commander, a chief, or nobleman. It includes the various high offices in a Muslim state.
So Amir is a part of a Muslim state? Okay, where's the state? Moorish Americans. Where's the state? Where's the Moorish American state constitution? Since y'all claiming y'all government officials and you getting all your students caught up? Where's the state? Amir. Okay, wait a minute. Okay. Let's go down here. Let's go down here. It mentions the word Amir again. Let's look at this definition. Okay, Amir, I'm listening.
Amir, um, Amir, leader and chief executive officer of the city-state elected by the people to implement, um, those programs which are in the best interest of the community.
Okay, so wait a minute. So the mirror still deals with what? The state. And Amir is what? Elected, elected, elected by the people. Okay, tell me which Moorish American was elected by the people of the Moorish American state according to the three branches of their constitution? It ain't never happened. So when Taj is saying a nation state, that means there needs to be three branches of government, there needs to be what? Elections, ballots, voting. When has it ever happened amongst all the Moorish Americans? It's never happened. But then the question was posed to him, shouldn't we be trying to put together states like AMPAC? He said, no. They turn around and say, uh, well, what I'm trying to say, uh, we just need to fix it, it already exists. Okay, then where's the state? And where's the elections? And who's the head of state then? Todd? Who's the legislative branch then, Todd? Who's the judicial branch then, Todd? Oh, but I forgot, in two thousand and five, you was fighting like a corporation, which should tell all the Moors that you're full of crap and you just stop the cap because you yourself was trying to fight it as a corporation and a temple instead of trying to fight it as a government official. And soon somebody asked him the question, should we put together states like AMPAC? He said, well, uh, we can't. Well, I mean, uh, well, it's not that we can't, we just can't reinvent the wheel, we just go back and fix the state. Well, how do you fix a state? Well, it starts with constitution, right? It technically starts with Declaration of Independence. You gotta understand the instructions of decolonization. You gotta understand this word, utti posidatus juris. I'm just giving the Moors a little bit of brief insight on the fact of why Todd keeps saying he didn't do the other half. But again, he ran around, called himself the Amir. But then Todd will turn around and tell you, oh, you guys, uh, ain't no more mirror guys. Then why you keep calling yourself a mirror? Because the mirror says what? Leader. Then Todd turn around and say what next? Oh, you guys looking for a sacrifice. What does that mean, Todd? Why do you keep saying, you Moors looking for a sacrifice? What does he mean? You know what that means? He don't wanna be what? The leader. He don't wanna tell the Moors the truth that they just simply needed to put together three branches of government. But see, Todd is a walking hypocrite, because he still wanna sit in the seat like he's at the top of the paradigm, while simultaneously saying, oh, y'all looking for somebody to be a leader, well, I ain't gonna be your leader, while simultaneously acting like he's a leader and doing nothing, got the Moors stuck buffering. This is what Moors gotta understand. Okay, why are we talking about this? Listen. Listen, Moors. This right here, what I have up here is good brother Jamal Bay of Rosamores. He just did another recent video. And I had to do all this buildup because we got a brother that unfortunately the cops have killed because that brother, that Moor who was squatting in the house didn't understand the treaty rights because Moorish American teachers don't teach it. Now Taj Sri Bay has rejected AMPAC, but yet at the same time, he telling Black Moors we need a state. Then Todd turns around and rejects AMPAC as being a state, even though he's a Moor subject. Taj Sri Bay has no status whatsoever other than a naturalized Moor, i.e. a Black of Moor. Let me ask Taj Sri Bay a question. What state recognizes your name as Taj Sri Bay? Can you please produce the evidence that a Moorish American state that's been ratified, deposed, and promulgated according to its constitution recognizes you as being a national of the state? Can you produce that? And the answer is no. It's a rhetorical question, as you already know, good brother Todd. Can you produce any state ID? I didn't say nationality card that came from Harvey Bay Publications Organization. I said state ID from a Moorish American state, even though there ain't no such thing as Moorish Americans. Can you still produce a Moorish American state ID that was issued to you from the state, brother? Do you have any type of government credentials from the state? Well, the answer is no, just like you don't have no credentials to prove that you're a national grand sheik. That's also a fraud. You're a walking contradiction, contradiction, brother. And because of your false teachings, now Jamal Bay has been indoctrinated, and he out here teaching this. Now, let me say something about Jamal. He's getting closer and closer to the truth. But Jamal is very stubborn, and I say that with love. He's very stubborn. And before I go any further, I also wanna backpedal and say thank you very much to Dr. G for asking Todd the question about AMPAC being a state. I thank you very much, Dr. G. I see you taking steps towards starting to ask Todd about these questions of statehood. I wanna say thank you very much. But let's get back to Jamal. Jamal just released this video a couple of weeks ago. Matter of fact, on here it says three days ago, okay? It says, Rosamores Basic Civic Lessons on Nationality and Cynicism. Now, we're gonna listen to this. It's about twenty-one minutes, and I'm gonna break it down, okay? I'm gonna break it down. But I want you to listen to what Jamal is saying. He's so close, but yet so far away. Jamal talks just like Todd. They think that they're standing on national status and they're not, because they can't prove what they're saying, so therefore everything they're saying is called a belief. They can't, they have no legal argument. They have no legal instruments to prove what is they're saying.
Near perfect lie.
Near perfect lie, that's right. Now, listen. Let's listen to this. This is AMPAC Study Session, right? It's an educational platform. Let's listen to this.
Peace, we're gonna jump straight into. As you can see here, I have a map of the continents. And some of what's shown is some of the geopolitical borders of some of the nation states on these specific continents, although we know.
So far, Jamal's used the terminology, nation state. You see how this word, now they're starting to throw it around? And all of a sudden, the Moors are getting brand new, using the word nation state. They don't wanna openly admit that they're stateless, so they throwing around this word nation state because they trying to find a way to say the AMPAC Study Session is correct. They trying to find a way to say the treaties and international law says what we need to do to get back on the yellow brick road. So they're creeping to get towards this whole nation state conversation. Keep in mind, I did a video showing Tahaka Bay, right from the Moorish Science Temple. He kept talking about a nation state. Tahaka Bay kept saying, we gotta establish, we gotta establish it. We gotta establish it, is all he kept saying about the nation state. Now, here comes Jamal talking about a nation state. Taj Sri Bay is talking about a nation state. But yet, the nation states are already existing, because the Moors in each of the territory are restoring the nation state, one territory at a time, one geographical latitude, longitude at a time. Such as Antioch, Colorado. AMPAC has restored a nation state within the empire of Morocco. Right now, we got seven recognized Moroccan states right now, from the east coast to the west coast, and it's growing quickly. So these Moorish Americans keep trying to pretend like there's no Moroccan state. So these Moorish Americans keep trying to pretend like there's no Moroccan states already. So they're trying to act like this is what we need to do in the future, when the reality is already happening in the present and it's already happened in the past ever since February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, when AMPAK signed their constitution. So this nation-state thing been going on for over two years, and these Moors keep acting like they wanna ignore the fact that AMPAK has already been doing along with six other Moroccan states. Listen, listen to what he's saying.
And six others coming on board.
And six more coming on board.
From basic geography, that Europe is not a continent, it is a peninsula. Anyway, we're gonna talk about nationality and citizenship. Alright, so I have here a, a few quotes from one quote is from the Court of Appeals of the Tenth Circuit. Shepard versus Holder. These are the opinions of federal court judges of the United States. And the other one is English, oops, excuse me, English versus Missy. Uh, this is also from a federal judge, a senior district judge. Um, in the Tenth Circuit in two thousand and twelve, uh, before Judge Hartz O'Brien and Matheson, both circuit judges. The opinion stated that nationality includes citizenship. Nationality claims is understood to include citizenship claims. So what we see here is I have, I just Google searched, so if you're any one of these two gentlemen, uh, I'm using the right to fair use law. These pictures were on Google, so I just Googled Ugandan traditional dress and Chinese traditional dress, and these two pictures popped up, so I used them. Uh, this man uh, would identify as a Ugandan. And by doing so, he's stating that he's a citizen of Uganda. Alright, because nationality includes citizenship. Alright? This man, who would probably identify as a Chinese man, by saying he's Chinese, he's also at the same time saying that he's a citizen of the People's Republic of China. Right? Now, when someone is born in their home nation, since they are of the same bloodline, they're automatically treated as a citizen. Alright, so we'll read this, English versus Missy's International Banking System, Inc. Right? What then does nationality encompass if it is not to be construed as being synonymous and coexistant with national origin? Nationality has several definitions, one of which appears to embrace, embrace the national origin concept. Meaning, a people having common origin, tradition, and language and capable of forming or actually constituting a nation-state, or...
Did you hear what he said? So he said nationality and citizenship is about what? A nation-state. What establishes nationality? A state. So he, he's already reading this out loud. I'm gonna let him keep reading, but watch what I do next. Listen.
An ethnic group constituting one element of a larger unit. Alright, then we also see in addition to the national origin definition, nationality is also defined as a legal relationship involving allegiance on the one part of an individual and usually protection on the part of the state and membership in a particular nation. So...
Membership of a state is called allegiance to a state. That's what establishes nationality and citizenship. Look what he's saying out loud. Now, wait a minute. He's talking about this guy from, from, uh, Uganda, right? Now, now, listen. Listen, cuz he using this man as an example. Uh, okay. Uganda has a constitution. It's a constitute of Uganda nineteen ninety-five revised in twenty seventeen. Okay, good brother Jamal, listen Jamal, since you wanna talk about people and their states, listen to what people have. Look what the Africans have. They have constitutions, Jamal. They have constitutions, Tajri Bay. You talking nation-state, Uganda, Uganda got a constitution. Let's read their preamble. I'm listening.
Preamble, "We, the people of Uganda, recalling our history which has been characterized by political and constitutional instability. Recognizing our struggles against the forces of tyranny, oppression, and exploitation. Committed to building a better future by establishing a socio-economic and political order through popular and durable national constitution based on the principles of unity, peace, equality, democracy, freedom, social justice, and progress. Exercising our sovereign and inalienable right to determine the form of governance for our country and having fully participated in the constitution-making process."
Pause. So none of this talking about a constitution? They're establishing what? Democracy. You see right here, democracy? Democracy. Tajri Bay told everybody democracy means a demon, but the reality, democracy means vote for your elected official. Who votes for the elected official? The republic, which is the people. The people is the republic, and they vote for the democracy of electing their officials. This is what constitutions are about. So Jamal is sitting here talking about a nation-state. He talking about, uh, Uganda, but yet he ain't done the background to find out what about Uganda? Okay, Uganda got a constitution. Jamal, where's your constitution at, Jamal? I love you, brother, but listen to what you're saying out loud. You saying people have to be a member to a state. Okay, Jamal, I'm asking you a question. Summarize the name of the state that you a member of, i.e. that you have pledged your allegiance and filled out an application and became a national of that state. Then tell me if that state accepted your application, and then you took your allegiance to said state and renounced the United States after that. Cuz you just said Uganda citizen would went over to China, so China have to accept that Uganda person to be Chinese citizen. We'll talk about that. Now, listen. What else about this constitution? Okay, watch this. Control F. I'm gonna type in the word, uh, I'm putting chapter, chapter six. Okay, what's chapter six about in their constitution?
The legislature.
The legislature, okay? Chapter six, legislator. Okay, okay, what is chapter seven about of the constitution?
The executive.
Chapter seven about the executive branch. Okay, what is chapter eight about?
Judiciary.
Judiciary, three branches of government. So Jamal sitting here talking about Uganda. He's using it as a reference point, and Jamal himself can't even tell you the name of the executors, the legislators, or judicial branch of what he perceives as him who declared his nationality as a Moorish American, but he can't tell you who the prime minister or head of state is of the Moorish American state. He can't tell you who the legislators are of the Moorish American state. He can't tell you who the judges are of the Moorish American state. But Jamal swear up and down because he was taught by Tajri Bay that all he gotta do is declare his nationality, and that's sufficient.
No, it ain't.
We've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray. Nobody else does this on planet Earth except for Moorish Americans with their patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious processes of sovereign citizenship. We don't study, that's our problem. So Uganda's got a constitution, okay? Uganda's got a constitution. Let, let's go back over to Jamal. Alright? Cuz he talking about this flag that represents a state. He talking about China that represents a state. So where's the state for the Moorish Americans? It don't exist. It don't exist. Listen.
By saying, by this man right here saying, "I am Ugandan national," he is saying that he's a Ugandan citizen. And by default, right, we already know allegiance is citizenship, right? So by default, his allegiance is to his people, right, represented by this flag. This man can say, "You know what? I want to expatriate." Meaning, I'm no longer a patriot. I no longer love, cuz patriot means, when, when, uh, when we think about patriots, uh, it's someone who loves their country. I no longer love how my country is being operated. So although, by just saying with, and I'm gonna write that down. Just saying with.
Okay, you just write the word, decolonization.
Alright, so just saying with is a Latin term that means right of blood.
How about the word, naturalization?
Alright, so by the right of his bloodline, his birthright, he has the right to be, uh, considered a Ugandan national and a Ugandan citizen. Right? Because he was born, he was born by blood, right? He was born a Ugandan, so therefore he has the right of blood, the right to be considered a citizen. Alright, that's called just saying with. If this man expatriates, right, and decides to become naturalized as a Chinese citizen off, after obviously applying to the, uh, to the Chinese government, probably taking some form of test.
Did you hear what we said? In order to become a Chinese citizen, you have to apply. To be a part of that state, to be what? Naturalized. When you leave your place of birth to go to another state, you'll be naturalized. That's what happened to the Moors. We end up in the jurisdiction of America, we became what? Naturalized what? Americans. Of their what? State. But yet our birth, right, rights is what? Moroccan. Who were naturalized as Americans. So you gotta listen to what he's saying. He give you analogy of what happens when your, your birthright, you don't wanna be Moroccan no more, you will become, let's say, Chinese.
Right.
So really, you gotta catch what he's really saying. He said, "I don't wanna be a citizen of the United States no more, so I'm gonna declare my nationality out loud." I'm gonna go to Arri Bay Publications and get some documentation that he claims is gonna give him some rights. And now he gonna say, "Now I'm a national, I'm a Moorish American national." Moorish American, uh, Moorish American national, what state? You claiming, good brother Jamal, you're leaving the jurisdiction in United States of America. Okay, what jurisdiction did you go and pledge your allegiance to, brother Jamal? What state did Tajri Bay pledges allegiance to? So they both claiming to be Moors. They both claiming not to come under the jurisdiction, United States of America. Okay, then tell me the name of the state you pledged your allegiance to that has jurisdiction over you. Tell me the name of the head of state. Tell me the name of the speaker of the legislative branch. Tell me the name of the chief judge of the judicial branch. Tell me these names, Taj. Tell me these names, Jamal. Tell me these names, Ross Mariah Bay. Tell me these names, Cujo. What are their names of these elected officials? Y'all keep talking about since you say y'all already got a state. They can't answer these questions. They too busy just collecting donations and cash out and admission fees, yeah, pay to come see me. But this is ridiculous. Listen, listen to Jamal, cuz Jamal has been indoctrinated by Tajri Bay. Tajri Bay is Jamal's teacher. This is what y'all gotta understand. This is a sickness. He, he's talking about statehood, and Jamal don't realize he's stateless. Listen.
Uh, regarding their history, their law, their culture, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. After he passes that test, once he moves, physically relocates his domicile to Chinese territory, he now becomes a Chinese citizen. So he's, he would have the same rights and/or duties and capacities as this man right here, Chinese national.
Isn't that what happened to Dred Scott? Dred Scott was a subject. He was a Moor subject in eighteen fifty-six. And then all of a sudden, now the United States of America made Dred Scott a naturalized citizen of the United States of America with the Thirteen, Fourteenth, Fifteenth Amendment. Right? In the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. And it was all confirmed by what? A treaty called what? Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, Paragraphs one and two. So everything the United States did with their Thirteen, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment was confirmed by the Sultan in eighteen eighty. Six years before Noble Dhaali was even born. All these treaties were signed. And if the Moors continued to acquiesce and consent to keep calling themselves Americans, then the American jurisdiction was overseeing them as American citizens. They got naturalized. Dred Scott was a Moor subject that could be naturalized being American, and that's what uh, Jamal is saying, that this brother now became a naturalized Chinese man. That's what happened to the Moors. They went from being Moroccan, they end up being Americans. This is too easy. Okay, the question is, how does this gentleman now, how can he return back home to his original bloodline? You got, you know, you know what he has to do? He has to renounce the citizenship of China as an example in order to go back home to his nation. His nation still gotta, by application, allow him to consent back to his own state. That's called nationalism. This is what good brother Malcolm X, Il Molee Shabazz, talking about, said, "We gotta go through a nationalism process." This is why J. Edgar Hoover was trying to stop what they call the nationalism movement. It's called the nationalism movement when the people of the land just do what? Declare their independence through a proper instrument. And then they draft a constitution, have three branches of government, they vote for their elected officials, and then they depolite that constitution with the United Nations in accordance, in accordance to Article one oh two of the Charter. That's called nationalism. Under what nationality is the question? And it would be Moroccan. Noble Dhaali said, "We're Moroccans." All the treaties say, "We're Moroccans." History books say, "We're Moroccans." Even George Washington referred to us as being what? Subjects, and who were the subjects in his letters? Moroccans. They're Moors. Moor Rockings. Listen, let's listen to Jamal.
Right, so he's still of Ugandan blood. He's still a Ugandan national, but since he expatriated, he is now a Chinese citizen. Now, obviously, I'm oversimplifying this because I don't know if these two countries actually have a treaty where they would, uh, either recognize dual citizenship or not recognize dual citizenship. Because it could also be the case where this Ugandan man is a Ugandan national by blood, obviously. Uh, and by default, by...
Let's pause right there. You see he mentioned treaties? They said, maybe that treaty don't recognize dual citizenship. Did, did you hear him say that? Maybe, maybe the treaty won't let you do a dual citizenship. Okay, let's pause right there. Okay, good brother Jamal, guess what? I got an answer for you when it comes to Moors. Let's go to, to, um, Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, okay? Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, we was already looking at Article eleven. Let, Article eleven, let's scroll on down to Article fifteen, good brother Jamal. Let me show you something about dual citizenship, brother Jamal. Let's see what it says about dual citizenship since you brought up the question. Alright, now, re- read paragraph one, please.
Article fifteen, "Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization is a, in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco."
Okay, so right here, uh, brother Jamal, according to the treaty, you're supposed to choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. That's a hundred percent Moroccan, not dual citizenship. Then it says, listen, it says, "And the obligation to quit Morocco," right, you wanna be expatriate, you wanna expatriate. It says, "Unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in the United States of America was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco," so therefore you gotta get permission first to even become a naturalized citizen of someone else's foreign state. Which means you gotta renounce your citizenship or national status with Morocco, and you take your behind over there and, and, and choose entire submission to be an American. There is no dual citizenship. I'm showing it right here, Jamal. You don't have to guess. That's what your treaty say, Jamal. This is for Moroccans, more specifically for who? This is for Moroccans, more specifically for who? Subjects or of Morocco, that's you, uh, Jamal and Taj, both of y'all are subjects of Morocco. So either you wanna be a hundred percent Moroccan, or you wanna be a hundred percent American, I'm answering the question for you Jamal. Since you put the question out there. See how easy this is? Go back and read the treaties, but I forgot, good brother, uh, Jamal, Taj Sri Bay never read these treaties out loud to you, and that's why you don't know nothing about it. But we gonna talk about that too, listen.
Sanguine, he is a Ugandan citizen. And obviously by right of the soul, cuz he was born in the country, on the actual territory of Uganda, then he would be a Ugandan citizen. Uh, if he decides to become a Chinese citizen, I do not know if, you would just have to check, you know, on your own, do your own independent research and see if uh, the People's Republic of China and, uh, Uganda have any treaties where they discuss this issue of citizenship. But this is a basic, uh, a basic idea of what citizenship is. So, uh, in the event where this man stays a Ugandan, uh, citizen and a Ugandan national and travels to China, to the People's Republic of China, he's now in a separate territory, but he's rec, he's not recognized as a citizen, he would be recognized as a foreign national. Right, so he, he still has the same national bloodline and citizenship of Uganda. But if he decides to travel for whatever reason to China, um, he would, he wouldn't be treated as a citizen, he would be treated as, as a foreign national. Which, if the People's Republic of China and Uganda had any treaties, uh, then how he's treated on this land would be predicated on that treaty. So if he, if, let's say he slaps this Chinese man in the face, which is obviously assault, which is a crime. If there's a treaty involved, the treaty would probably specify that this man has the right to, uh, consular assistance, I'll write that down for you. Cuz it's not consul, it's consular. Right, this just means that someone, a delegate from, uh, Uganda would be present at his court hearings to ensure that the treaty between China and Uganda is not violated as long as his rights aren't violated. Uh, while also, uh, while also the People's Republic of China enforces their law against this person if he assaulted this person up here.
Now wait a minute. Jamal said that a foreign national is entitled to what? Consular representation by their state officials. Okay Jamal, my question to you is, where was your consul relations? Where was the representative of this Moorish American state that came to represent you while you'd be, by you, while you were detained by the police? Where was the representative that came out to that nine hour, ten hour standoff you did? Where was the Moorish American state representative, the consulars, to come out there and help you with that dispute? When you hit, when you went to court, y'all was all there by yourselves. So why is he doing a class to try to school us on what a consul representative is? If in fact you're a foreign national in someone else's jurisdiction? Cuz Jamal Bay was claiming that he's not a citizen of the United States or of the several union states. So therefore, where was Jamal Bay's consul representation?
He's stateless.
He's stateless, that's why nobody showed up to represent him, but he's claiming he's a foreign national. Then where's your foreign national government then Jamal? This is what the master teachers have taught their students, and their students now are turning around and teaching the third and fourth generation all this crap. This is indoctrination teaching, but Jamal is so close to understanding the truth, but he can't recognize that he himself is stateless while talking about somebody from Uganda in China. Okay Jamal, then where's your state? Where's your consul representation? You too smart, British brother. Listen.
Right, so that's how citizenship and nationality works. Now hold on a while, let's see if I can find, uh, something right here so I can read about expatriation. Just so you can see, uh, what I mean by expatriation. Alright, so, this is, this is again from a, this is from the United States Supreme Court. One second. Right, it's gonna be long. I'm gonna have to carry it a little bit.
Oh my god, it started new.
Alright, we'll just make it big. I'm gonna text larger. And I'll read. Hopefully you all can see that. So this is from the United States Supreme Court. Talbot versus Jensen.
The right, before he starts reading this, have y'all noticed that all he keeps reading is the statutes in the case law of the United States and their several union states. While simultaneously saying he's a foreign national that shouldn't be coming under their jurisdiction of America, but he keeps reading American laws out loud. Okay Jamal, where's the Moorish American statutes? Where's the Moorish American laws? Where's the Moorish American legislative acts that came through the legislative branch of the Moorish American state government? That was passed over to the prime minister, the head of state of the Moorish American state? Where are those bills and laws Jamal Bay? You know why he ain't reading Moorish American laws out loud? Cuz there ain't no dang on state!
They have no laws.
They have no laws, they're lawless and stateless. But Jamal trying to school people on what it is to be a national of a state and what your rights are if in fact you find yourself being a foreign national. This is all just patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious cuz Jamal is right on the cusp. He started slowly but surely figured this thing out that he himself is stateless. While simultaneously with his eighteen thousand subscribers on a YouTube channel, he got them thinking that they can enforce this stuff while simultaneously saying they're foreign nationals but enforcing American laws. Wait, you said you're not a citizen, then why you keep quoting their laws then Jamal? Where the heck is your manual? Where all your laws for the Moorish Americans? Ask Taj Sri Bay, since he been teaching for fifty years, where are the Moorish American laws? They don't exist. This is why his student Jamal Bay is reading American laws. Cuz the Moorish Americans don't have a constitution, cuz their constitution, their state would've set up three branches of government and they could've started enacting laws. So when they ask Taj Sri Bay, don't we need states like ANPAC? You know what the answer should've been? Absolutely, but instead he's playing games cuz he don't wanna go tell Jamal Bay that Taj Sri Bay was what? Wrong. That's the problem. These Moorish American teachers don't wanna tell their students the truth. So they got their students out here looking silly. But see, I can break this down so easily. So if I can break this down so easily, imagine what the United States magistrates can do to, to Jamal. I'm his fellow Moor. I'm Jamal's fellow Moor, and I'm looking out for him to let him know, brother, you are wrong. You don't know what you're talking about, you talking like you're a national of a state, and sir, you are stateless. What you're quoting is not applicable to you, good brother Jamal. You're still American, or American citizen at that because you're still naturalized as a Moorish subject in the jurisdiction of the United States. So therefore, brother Jamal, you come under their civil and criminal jurisdiction, you are not a foreign national. I can prove it every day of the week, listen.
Of expatriation. It is implied likewise in the nature and object of the social compact, that social compact is the allegiance. Right? Which would-
Did you hear what he said? Allegiance, allegiance to what Jamal? Oh, a state, did you, did you pledge your allegiance to a Moroccan state, good brother Jamal? The answer is no. Did you pledge your allegiance to a Moorish American state that's got three branches of government? The answer is no. So you see what you're reading here? This is not applicable to you. I appreciate you reading it because the Moroccan nationals can certainly learn a lot from this, but you, good brother, are still a naturalized citizen under the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States. However, as soon as you pledge your allegiance to a Moroccan state, then you can start reading this. Let's continue.
Formed to shield the weakness and to supply the wants of individuals, this is where, when I, I read that other case right here, where it says, um, protection on the part of the state. That's what they're talking about here, to shield the weakness of the individual and supply for the wants of the individual. This is where government assistance comes into play.
Duh!
Things like housing, subsidized housing and, uh, and food, uh, where we know it's, uh, probably wig or uh, food stamps or something like that. To protect the acquisition of human industry, so to protect commerce, to provide the means of human, and to provide the means of human happiness. Whenever these purposes fail, either the whole society is dissolved or the suffering individuals are permitted to withdraw from it. So in the example where I talked about before, if this man is not happy with how his home country is being administered, he has the right to leave. He can say, okay, I wanna go to China, I wanna go to Russia, I wanna go to Australia, I wanna go to Great Britain, I wanna go to Brazil. I wanna go to Saudi Arabia, I wanna go to Arabia, I wanna go to Afghanistan, I wanna go to Spain, I wanna go to Mexico. He can go anywhere he wants. Right, that's the right of expatriation. Will it be said that the renunciation of allegiance to the former implies or draws after it a renunciation of allegiance to the latter? The so-
Did you hear what he said? So you gotta renounce the former and do what? Pledge allegiance to what? The present state. Meaning you gotta go from one state jurisdiction directly into another state jurisdiction. Okay, so the Moorish Americans just said, oh, I renounced the United States of America, okay, sounds good. Tell me what state you pledge your allegiance to. Tell me about the three branches of government. What's the name of the head of state? What's the name of the speaker of the house of the legislative branch? What's the name of the judges? Matter of fact, show me the public inauguration and you ain't gotta tell me nothing else, I go watch it for myself. But it don't exist. Ain't no Moorish American state public inauguration. I remember a time when good brother, um, Abdullah Talib Mosse Bay, right? Goes by the name of Dooley. I remember one time Dooley said on a camera, he said, "Show me a public inauguration and I'll bow down to you." This is what he was saying to the Moorish Americans. He said it on camera, "Show me a public inauguration and I'll bow down to you." And guess what? The Moorish Americans couldn't show it to Dooley. They was all full of crap, he called them out. This was a couple years ago, and the Moorish Americans still don't have no dang on public inaugurations. But wait a minute, who does have public inaugurations?
ANPAC.
ANPAC, the question that was posed to Taj. ANPAC's checking abotches along with the other Moroccan states. While Taj is saying, we need a nation state, that's exactly what ANPAC did along with the other Moroccan states. Shout out to, uh, Dooley. Let's continue.
Sovereigns are different, the allegiance is different, the right too may be different. The doctrine is that allegiance cannot be due to two sovereigns. And taking an oath of allegiance to a new is the strongest evidence of withdrawing allegiance from the previous sovereign.
He said, taking the oath of allegiance, but you must have what? Proof. Proof! He said you must have proof, right? Is the strongest evidence, the strongest evidence, I don't know if y'all can see that.
Yep.
The strong, the strongest evidence is proof. Okay Moorish Americans, prove that you took your allegiance to a Moorish American state. Well, it don't exist because first of all, there's no such thing as Moorish Americans. Why is it that there can be no such thing as Moorish Americans? It's because Moorish Americans is what? That's a corruption of two separate nations. You can't put them both together, they're separate. The bilateral treaty recognizes two separate nations of Moroccans and Americans, you can't be both. And he's just read right here, you can't pledge your allegiance to two sovereigns. So you know what pledging your allegiance to two sovereigns look like? Moorish American? Cuz that's Moroccan American, that's pledging your allegiance to two sovereigns. You see how silly this is? See how easy this is? This is too easy.
Listen, we're almost done. So we see here that, once you proclaim your nationality, you are claiming, uh, what you are a citizen of. And you can also research this on your own, eight USC fourteen eighty-one. Alright, I'll, I'll put it here so you can see it as well. I'll do this for you. This specific, uh, specific United States code deals with the relinquishment of US citizenship. And when you declare your allegiance to a foreign nation, by doing so, you automatically relinquish US citizenship. That's why I, um, let me, let me go back to that. Let me, this favorite thing back up. Alright, this is dealing, that's dealing with that principle. When you read, uh, this United States code, when you read this United States code and you see where they, where the United States federal government talks about losing US citizenship, the moment you declare your nationality to a foreign state, you relinquish US citizenship immediately. Right, because-
Wait a minute.
No, you don't.
He said one thing, you gotta pledge allegiance to another state. Jamal Bay and Taj Sri Bay and Ross Mariah Bay and Cujo Hill, they ain't ever pledged their allegiance to no Moorish American state that's got three branches of government. And they certainly haven't pledged their allegiance to a Moroccan state cuz none of them wanna be Moroccans. Yet their pedigree, their consignomeny is absolutely Moroccan. Now wait a minute, he, he gonna keep talking about this United States code stuff, listen.
Cuz of what the United States Supreme Court said. The doctrine is that allegiance cannot be due to two sovereigns, and remember, the United States does not officially recognize dual citizenship in its laws, look it up. It does not recognize dual citizenship. This is why Prophet Nogadri Ali said if the Italians, Turks, uh, and Egyptians, I can't remember which one was the other nation state he brought up, are forced to declare their nationality before the constitutional laws of, of the United States, then it's only right that everybody else does the same. Right, so for the Moorish Americans claiming that, uh, we are citizens of the United States, by declaring your nationality, you are relinquishing US citizenship based on-
Did you hear what he said? Oh yeah, just declare it, and that's it. But yet he said you have to pledge allegiance. And it has to be proven, there must be evidence. Well, wait a minute, so what did Jamal say? His Araby Publications documentation is evidence? He said it's Moorish American, uh, uh, temple documentation is documentary evidence? Well, neither one of those is a state, good brother Jamal. And you certainly can't go down to Kinko's and print your own identification card and say, you see right here, this is my nationality card. Did a state issue it to you? No, okay, this is what? Patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. Now you can't blame Jamal, don't get me wrong, Jamal has faults cuz he's intelligent enough to go do his own research. But guess who taught him this crap? His Moorish American teacher Taj Sri Bay. Listen.
This wall right here. I'll highlight it for you, I'll make it big.
Listen.
This is very important because, uh, when we were arrested, there was a specific grand sheik of one of the temple number ones, which obviously doesn't make sense, saying that what we were doing was wrong and that we're citizens of the United States. And there's a, there's an example of, let me show you this right here.
Guess what Jamal? That, that, uh, Moorish Science Temple told you correctly, brother, you are a citizen of the United States. You have yet to pledge your allegiance to any other state, brother. You are stateless. Your declarations mean absolutely nothing Jamal, I'm telling you the truth, I can challenge you every day of the week on this. That, that Moorish American temple told you the truth, you are still a citizen and you need to act according to that, brother. Or you, you need to retire the entire submission to the laws of the empire and pledge your allegiance to a Moroccan state government. Now look at this, he's still quoting what? United States codes while telling the Moorish Science Temple that he's not a citizen. He telling the Moorish Science, uh, uh, temple that I ain't no citizen, but yet Jamal keeps quoting laws that citizens use.
After he said, when we were arrested.
Yeah, and he was arrested. And then when he got arrested, guess what he was screaming out loud? This, this is my second amendment right to bear arms. While simultaneously saying he's not a citizen of the United States of America. This is ridiculous. This is what Taj has done to all the Moors. This is what Taj has done to all the Moors.
I just have to pull it up real fast. I think I saved it. There's an example of, um, Prophet Nubu Drali's nationality cards before and after he died. And, uh, before he died, it looked like this. Alright. As we can see, uh, the sister's name, the signature's right here, her appellation's right there. Then it says, "This is your nationality and membership card for the Moorish Holy Temple of Science and birthright for Moorish Americans, etc. We honor all the prophets, Muhammad and Jesus. May the blessings of the gods of our forefathers, Allah, be upon you that carry this card. I do hereby declare that you are a Muslim under the divine laws of the holy Quran of Mecca. Love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice." Nine, three, twenty-six. That's a two.
So he's thinking that a nationality card is what gives Moors national standing of a state. This card literally came from a temple.
Yeah.
It's a, it's, it's an organization incorporated. So I don't understand with, why Jamal even bringing this up to make a point of interest? As if the card that Noble had in the nineteen twenties is any different than the card that was in the nineteen forties or in the year twenty twenty-three. They're all cards that came from a temple and not a state.
Well, this is nineteen twenty-six, which means Prophet Nubu Drali was alive. Now after his death, we see this right here. Notice how it says nineteen and then the four, so this is for, this is for nineteen forty, so forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five to forty-nine. You see here, it was added, "I'm a citizen of the United States of America." That was added after his death. This is from nineteen twenty-six. This is from nineteen twenty-nine. Now, uh, I wasn't going to show this, but I'm gonna show it now because it's very important because I'm talking about this issue of citizenship. I'm gonna show you this reference from the Congressional Record of the United States at the height of the civil rights movement in nineteen twenty-six. Excuse me, nineteen sixty-seven. I just have to find it. I have it certified from the Library of Congress. A lot of you Moors have already seen this from me. I've already posted this several times, uh, but since we're live, I'm gonna do it again, if I can find it. Proceedings and debates of the Ninetieth Congress First Session, Volume One, One, Three, Four, Twelve, June Twelve, Nineteen Sixty-Seven, Page One, Five, Six, Four, One to One, Five, Six, Four, Six. That is the reference if you wanna type it. Here it is.
You know, I'm just, I'm just gonna pause it there. It, Moors can go back on, it's twenty-one minutes of mishmash. Right? Word salad. It's unintelligible because Jamal Bay himself can't prove that he got state ID from a Moorish American state. But yet he's doing a class as if he does. And he can't produce the documentary evidence that he's been recognized as a national of a Moorish American state, in which there's no such thing. And he certainly hasn't pledged his allegiance and his tired submission to the laws of the empire of a Moroccan state, cause Jamal don't refer to himself as being what? Moroccan. This is shameful. Listen. Now, why do I show all that? It, it's because the Moors are being injured. Jamal went to jail for over a year over this crap. I just showed you Uganda's constitution, right? He sitting here talking about Uganda, but guess what? Right, they're not stateless. Right, let me, let me scroll to the top. Alright, so Uganda has a constitution. Right? We the people of Uganda. Where's the "we" the people of the Moorish American constitution? It don't exist. Listen. Why am I talking like this? Let, let me show y'all an example of something. You see what I got up here? This is a letter, and, and I say this with respect, this is a letter that good brother Jamal wrote while he was in prison. Good brother Jamal, I want you to know something. Cause I got love for you Jamal. But I know you've been indoctrinating, you're very, very, very stubborn and hard-headed, but I'm trying to talk to you, brother. This is the letter that you sent good brother Nasir Bay. Right? You know what I'm talking about Jamal. This is you when you was in jail, good brother. This is the letter you sent him. That's you. Political prisoner, number zero eight, I think that's a seven, three, five, one. That's you Jamal Bay. This is a letter you sent Nasir, good brother. How is it that I have a copy of it, the letter? It's because at that time, good brother Jamal, when you didn't realize, I was the one behind the scenes asking good brother Nasir Bay. I was asking Nasir Bay to write you letters while you was in prison. I had Nasir Bay send you a copy of the treaties. I had Nasir Bay try to explain to you the fact that you were a naturalized citizen and that's why you were being treated the way you were being treated. I tried to get Nasir Bay to send you all kinds of correspondences. Y'all was pen pals, you remember that Jamal? It was me behind the scenes in the year twenty twenty-two, when you was locked up. I was behind the scenes trying to get Nasir Bay to send you letters to try to get you to read the treaties, brother. That was my work behind the scenes. I've been looking out for you for a long time and you had no clue. And don't get me wrong, I know Nasir Bay was telling you about me even in the year twenty twenty-two. And let's also keep it real Jamal. Do you recall in the year twenty twenty? Cause I remember it vividly. Good brother Tariq Bay, who used to live in the jurisdiction of Colorado. You remember Tariq Bay? Who'd be on, uh, uh, Cujo's, uh, Canada Land Moors YouTube channel slandering me, Tariq Bay? You remember when Tariq Bay called you on the phone and said, man, this brother Jay Bay is something else. This, this brother Jay Bay, he, he's highly intelligent, highly intelligent? And he's next up. You remember when Tariq Bay was calling you? Yeah, I know all about that Jamal. Even since twenty twenty, you've been hearing about me. I've been doing everything I can behind the scenes to let you know, good brother, I got your back. But you don't listen. You don't listen. And I want you to know, I was the reason why Nasir was sending you letters. And guess what you did when you got out of prison? You rejected Nasir. And you went on doing that Moorish American thing and the next thing you know, you still getting caught up. I just want you to know something Jamal. The United States and the several union states are using you, brother, to go back out here beating that drum of being a Moorish American. And look where you were, brother. You were so-called political prisoner and you wasn't no political prisoner. You were just a citizen being locked up by citizens. But you've been indoctrinated to think that you are part of a different political jurisdiction and you are not. So, so I'm extending to you once again, good brother Jamal, an opportunity that we gotta come together. Please reach out to me or find a way for someone to get your contact information in my hands so I can reach out to you directly instead of me sending all these kites to you. Cause this has gotta end, bro. Because I'm gonna let you, let you know something. This pin is gonna put an end to colonists and obstructionists. And brother, if you keep being an obstructionist, then unfortunately, when this pin swings, it's gonna hit whatever's in front of it. So I need you to stop being an obstructionist. Stop teaching Moors this Moorish American BS that got you put in jail.
Islam.
Islam.
I am with that. Islam.